We're hugging cords. How you feeling?
Hey, you're lucky I brought it.
How you feeling?
Much better.
Good to hear. Not gonna get me sick, great?
You can't promise that.
Oh, cool. Just checking.
This is gonna be long enough that'll hang on the floor? Do I need to...
I'll put it over on the other side of the desk. Coming over. Wait a minute.
Productive meeting with Chief Laurie.
Here's your room today. It's nice. Usually in your lab.
Yeah.
I did see Jason, but is he not staying?
No.
The items in yellow are what's up on the board.
Okay.
So you can have it right in front of you as well as on the...
All right. Sounds good. Thank you.
Bill, I think we have to public participation first, the way it looks.
You can amend the agenda.
Where did David go?
Tell him where to get snacks.
We have no audience?
What's that?
We have no audience?
Not yet.
I don't know. I've sent it out. I've sent it here. Three audience room. Just a guess. Maybe you're...
Good evening, everyone. This is a special committee of the whole meeting of the City of DeKalb, City Council, February 20, 2018. Roll call, please.
Jacobson?
Here.
Finukin?
Here.
Markwart?
Fagan?
Here.
Norieko?
Here.
Burbick?
Here.
Favor?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Sovereign President?
Alderman Markwart contacted me earlier today and he was unable to rearrange a former commitment for this evening and will not be joining us. However, you should have been sent this afternoon in an email his priorities that he thought we should include as part and parcel of this meeting, and we will do that. Allow me to explain what it is that I hope we're going to be able to accomplish tonight. And since this is a goal-setting kind of meeting, I have been advised that one of our goals should be to try to contain this meeting to 90 minutes to two hours. So we're gonna do our darndest to do that. A little bit of housekeeping or lay of the land information for the benefit of our city council and for those watching this evening. On January 24th, this city council met at the DeKalb Public Library and came up with a number of goals, a wide-ranging number of goals, as a matter of fact, at a goal-setting session facilitated by Carol Zar. I think we all came away from that meeting hopefully with a clearer sense of where we may be going and what roads we may be looking at. Carol was complimentary about the fact that we, as a council, worked in tandem, worked in stride when we were put those dots up on the board, if you recall, are our ideas. And I commend council for that. Even those who were in the audience that evening commended this council for working together and partaking in an exercise that hopefully will lead to not only where we are tonight, but where we are as it relates to the budget workshops and the budgeting process, which, as you know, we're starting much earlier this year than in previous years. Before you, you will see a summary of the 10 primary categories that we identified on the 24th of January. Figuring that we would want to get up and move around a tad, we're gonna do another exercise towards the end of the evening. And behind you up here, behind our regular city council chairs, you'll see those 10 categories mapped out. What I've done, based on the number of responses and the number of ideas that we had January 24th, is to take the two, three, four, five, maybe in some cases as many as six specifics, if you will, in those arenas that I thought we should probably either discuss or at least identify. So here's the process that I'd like to see us do tonight and accomplish. And by the way, on the sheet that you have in front of you, the ones that are highlighted yellow are the ones that are up on the board, okay? So what I would like to do is to go through these categories one by one and see if it evokes any conversation. Now, as is the case with any exercise like this, I realize that there are going to be some goals, whether they be short-term or long-term, that someone will say, "Well, they didn't talk about that." You know? They didn't talk about the DeKalb Public Library, which has been in the news. No, we haven't talked about that. That's gonna be, that's a real short, short-term goal. But, you know, we want to take these and see how we wrap them in then to our budget process. But again, there will be a few perhaps that either you identify that we didn't identify, that we didn't talk about on the 24th, or folks will do that at home. So what I'd like to suggest is that as we discuss and go through these 10 categories, we will then, at a time when we can break, and that may be in 20 minutes, that may be in 45 minutes, we'll see how the evening goes. I'd like to have each and every one of you, I'm gonna give you 10 dots, 10 green dots, and I'd like you to go up on the board here and mark those 10, your 10 top priorities. You cannot use all 10 dots for one priority. But you could use all 10 dots, well, at least maybe 10 dots over just two of those categories. If you feel, for example, that economic development and residential growth are the two top priorities that we should be addressing, then use your dots there, as long as there are 10 specifics up there. So we'll see how that goes. And then what we'll do, we'll have a clearer idea then, hopefully, of what our top 10 priorities should be. I have Alderman Markwart's ideas. I will make sure that I use his dots for the seven or eight ideas that he had given me. And Tony, you came through as an appendix B. Have you ever been an appendix B before, Tony? Okay. Well, you were this time because you missed that January 24 meeting, but we wanna make sure that what we not only talk about tonight, but what's up here incorporates some of the things that you gave us as an appendix B. I think they do, frankly, in looking at these and earlier on, over the past couple of weeks. So is that fairly clear? Does that make sense to everyone that this is something that we might, might wanna talk about? Yes, Alderman Norieko?
I just wanna clarify that once we're finished with this process, we may get to the point that these 10 main categories have been reduced to like six or something.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Very well.
So we, we shouldn't necessarily feel obligated to put all 10 of our dots in, you know, one in each category or something.
No, you don't have to do that. I think it'll be very clear, hopefully it'll be very clear, just as a few of these popped out of these categories, it'll be clear on what we wanna focus our efforts on. All of this then, will, will, as we extrapolate these out, some will be more short-term. They're gonna be something that we can do over the next year, 18 months. Some may be more long-term, and we've included some of those also. For example, let's take a look at this first one and then I will try to shut my mouth a little bit and let, and let you folks talk. But on economic business development, if we were to accomplish focusing on areas outside of downtown, if we were to create changes in our UDO, if we were to focus on supporting existing businesses, all of a sudden, what do we do? We may very well have accomplished what is the first specific under long-term. We will be viewed as more business-friendly. So those are some of the things that I think we will learn as we, as we go through this process. So what I'd like to do is, as your mayor and moderator tonight, I will go through what we feel are the top two, three, four, five, or six items that, that really were flushed out of a specific category, and then I'd like to open it up for any discussion. Does that, does that make sense? Okay. So, under economic and business development, and it is one of 10 categories, for the benefit of those at home who may not be able to see these up here, and by the way, for those of you in the audience, there are sheets like this that have our, our goals listed on them. We would encourage you to follow along. But our 10 top categories that we identified, on January 24th, economic business development, residential growth, transportation, the airport, government operations, budget/finance/fiscal planning, capital planning, public safety, community special events and attractions, and Northern Illinois University. And again, some of these morph into others, as we, as we well know. So let's go over economic business development. We've identified that the top six focus areas, if you will, or goals, might be to increase focus on areas outside the downtown, create business-friendly municipal code in our UDO, and focus on supporting existing businesses, be viewed as business-friendly, development in Park 88 and south of the tollway, and develop plans for areas outside the downtown, which again was more, it was short-term and long-term. So I'll open it up for any comments, any suggestions, not only to the process as we're going through here, but also on these specifics. Kate?
Two of these goals or actions strike me as not being specific enough. Focus on supporting existing businesses. I don't know what kind of support. Marketing support, dollars and cents, friendlier UDO, that seems vague to me. Also, be viewed as business-friendly. We keep throwing this term around, and I think it can have a multitude of interpretations. I need to know what business-friendly looks like.
Okay. Alderman Fagan?
Well, as long as you bring up business-friendly.
Make sure you get your mic down.
I'm sorry. As long as we're talking business-friendly, I think that would go into short-term, once we figure out what business-friendly is. But, because when we're talking about short-term, we're talking about 12 to eight months out. And we have to be sooner than that than later. I think the business-friendly portion of it is, I don't think there's a direct definition, but when we're talking about creating a business-friendly municipal code, UDO, I think just a little bit of everything on what we do and how we project ourselves toward I don't think there's a direct definition to that, but I think we all know that, we know what not being business-friendly is. So I just, I just can't give an explanation of that, but I do want that to be moved onto a short-term, because I think that we need to do that between 12 and eight months. Going longer than 18 months, it's not a goal. Thank you.
Yeah, Alderman Burbick?
And I would agree. I think the, the challenge for us is to put measures in place. For example, how to be business-friendly, measure the time of how long it takes, for example, to pursue a request, a business request in the city, to open a new business, to whatever that pursuit may be. I think, you know, we can certainly assign a length of time to how long that process takes and improve the process to be more business-friendly, to shorten that time, or the, maybe the number of layers or efforts or contacts to, to get the work done. So to echo Alderman Norieko's point, I think it's, these are great ideas, but yes, we'll need to develop the metrics that we're, we're interested in within those areas.
Alderman Favor?
So some of the feedback that I've received and some of the things that I think we've seen over the last, well, that I've seen over the last year or two being in this position is, if somebody's gonna do a project, it would be, it'd be wonderful if there was like a single document that listed everything they needed to do, as opposed to, you know, I need to go see Public Works, I need to go see the finance department to get a permit, I need to, you know, talk to the planning and zoning, and I need to go, you know. So if, that, that's part of being the business-friendliness, is that welcoming aspect of, we want your business, we want your project, here's a sheet, this is how you get started, this is how, you know, we'll take care of you and walk through the project with you. I, you know, so, you know, having one person do an inspection and then, you know, months later, another person walks through and identifies something that probably should've been caught during that first inspection, but now it's, you know, it's gonna be part of, you know, work that needs to be done before occupancy can be, can be given. So there, there's been examples, even, you know, those of us sitting right here, I think we've, we've heard stories of businesses who have wanted to do something and, you know, they've, they've had to get a special use permit, or, you know, it's been like, well, we've been doing business in DeKalb for 20 years and now, all of a sudden, you know, this has to change. So it's just looking at, you know, the UDO, what we've got on, you know, what we have as our regulations and making sure that, number one, they are promoting business, and number two, that, that they're not, we're not requiring people to go, to find multiple sources, not putting it on the person who wants to come and invest in the city, putting the onus on them to go find all the, all the answers, but that we give them a check sheet, or we can give them, you know, a plan of how to get through permitting process, building process.
So there's gotta be more focus on the process.
Process-focused.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Alderman Fagan?
I'm glad you brought that up, because that was brought up in the, our committee for economic development for the city, about, about sheets that, you know, helpful sheets for people to walk through, because they talked about different types of businesses and how it would help them. So I just wanna let you know, that has been discussed in committee.
Thank you. David?
Again, I would agree with all those things. I think that with standardized processing and a plan of how to do something, we hear about projects that are fast-tracked. We hear about, especially downtown projects that are fast-tracked, where they can get a turnaround in 60 to 75 days. We see other projects from other local heavy hitters, if you will, and those get right through the process, and they're on the desk, and they're, they're on our desk to approve them in a relatively short amount of time. When you look at some of these other projects, they could take six or nine or 12 months to even start the conversation, and I've witnessed that recently. That's a problem for us. That's something that certainly is viewed as not business-friendly, it's certainly not viewed as professional. Again, in talking to several developers that have looked at DeKalb, they said the process just isn't worth it. The hoops you have to jump through and the games you have to play, and the constant amount of work you have to do for things to change constantly through the cycle, again, that, that has deterred a lot of people from coming here. When you look at our UDL and our accepted uses that are very limited in most districts, the process to change that for a new business to come in and be innovative and be something different and be a value-add to our community could take a year to even get in front of us. That's not reasonable. That's not acceptable. Those people can go to other municipalities and have it done in 60 to 75 days. Why would they waste their time on DeKalb, when the time and expense and costs and all those things? When we look at some of our outdated building stock, when we look specifically downtown and in My Ward and in Beanygliden neighborhood, to pretend that we're going to get a perfect, brand-new, build-type property at the cost and time and expense it costs to do that, I think is foolish. I think a lot of these older properties that are 50, 60, 70, 100 years old, there's other cities that are doing things that we don't allow here. There's other cities that are allowing for people to come in and leave half of one wall up and call them remodels, where our city comes in and says, "Oh, no, you have to bring it fully up to ADA and fully up to new code, and put sprinklers into it, and do this, and do all the lighting requirements, and do that." It just doesn't make sense in the buildings. Our property stock isn't value enough, valuable enough to do those things, which is, again, preventing development in the areas where we desperately need it right now. Is it, is it a one, one quick answer of what's gonna be business-friendly? No, I can tell you right now, we are not perceived that way by much of the business community. The accolades or the pats on the back we keep getting are the fast-tracked projects that effectively staff holds the hand of that developer and pushes it through the process very, very quickly, and they come back and say, "Steph was wonderful to deal with." All projects should be that way. If we have someone willing to come to DeKalb right now and bring us their business idea, bring us their entrepreneurship, bring us their tax revenue, we need it. All projects should be that way. And I realize that with a limited amount of staff, it's not always gonna be the ideal, but we should be pushing, at least through our process, through what we're putting out to the business owners. We should be trying to find a way to make it work for them, not the other way around.
What I hear here then is some consensus that within the, if this is to be successful, over the next 12 to 18 months, we're going to do things that will, that will result in us being much more business-friendly. We're gonna take some of the specifics that we discussed here in this first category, and, and, and I think that's gonna probably show up here when we, when we do our dots. Let's...
If I could add, for example, increase focus on areas outside the downtown, well, that's the entire city.
Yes.
So perhaps we could have an inventory of what we mean by that, what, what could be those spaces. Are those the gateways to our city, or are those the commercial areas or the potential growth in residential construction? So I think an inventory of what that means first would be helpful.
Good. Let's move on to residential growth then. The three items that are on the board here that were, that sort of rose out of our initial discussion on the 24th. Issue at least 10 new home builds at $200,000 or more. Think outside the box, again, whatever that might mean, in terms of growth and rooftops. And plan for Beanygliden North. Again, we're in the process of doing some of that. So I would open up to any comments regarding this particular category, residential growth. David?
Again, I think that some of these terms are intentionally broad to allow for some, to allow for some more conversation and allow for some more thinking as to what we do creatively to think outside the box. Again, 10 homes, that's not gonna change our situation. That's $15,000 in tax revenue that comes to the city. I, I mean, that doesn't cover the carpet in this room in reality. When you're talking about those things, we need to do something vastly different here. We need to figure out why, what benefit DeKalb, the City of DeKalb has over our competitors. Clearly, we're not as close to the city. Clearly, we're not as close to the arts and the culture of the city. Clearly, we don't have the public transportation. We don't have those things. Those are obviously some of the detractors of why our target base of residential residents, which certainly includes young professionals, young families, and retirees, those with the expendable income to come in and be consumers in our, in our economy, that's who we wanna target. That's who all cities wanna target. I mean, that's not saying that it's discriminatory or racially motivated, those things. The reality is, you want consumers to come in with the money to help put the steam in your economy. When you're thinking about those types of people, what do we have here that attracts them? What do we have that makes us unique, that other communities, especially to our east, that are building out right now and still growing, when you look at Alburn, when you look at St. Charles, when you look at the Randall Road Corridor, they're still building residential regularly. Ours has stalled. Why? What can we do to counter that? Can we go after a senior citizen community of five or six or 700 rooftops? We have the land to do that here. We have land, we have water, we have access to shopping up on 23. Sycamore has figured out effectively how to use our resources and our population to their benefit and been able to attract a lot of the national retailers that a 15,000-person town never would've been able to get unless we were in their five-mile circle. We need to figure out how to start using some of their benefits and their amenities to our advantage at this point, so that we're doing it together and we're growing together. We have that opportunity. We have the Bethany Road Corridor, we have the Beanygliden North Corridor, we have several corridors outside of what is the traditional downtown or TIF districts or existing business cores. We have the Peace Road Corridor up off 88, we have the South First Road Corridor, we have the South Fourth Corridor. All of those can be built out into something new. How do we attract, how do we get those residents that we want in our community? How do we get those residents that are going to support our community? And how do we do enough growth, again, in looking at, we need now, thousand-plus rooftops, 10 isn't gonna do it. 10's a great short-term goal. It's great. We've, we probably will hit that this year with our impact fee waivers and other things. If we're only focused on the 10, we're losing sight of the 1,000 we need, both for us and the school district to pay its bills that were projected 10 years ago.
And what I hear here is, is thinking outside the box, thinking, doing something differently.
Radically differently.
Yeah. And, and I would agree with you, Dave. 10 homes isn't gonna hack it. However, 10 homes, in addition to whatever tax revenue it creates, it's going to start a perception change. And the perception right now is that, you know, we, you don't wanna come to DeKalb because of this, that, or whatever. This, I think, is, is a big, is, is a big plus in that regard. Any other comments on residential growth? Kate?
The piece about thinking outside the box in terms of growth and rooftops, I think we do need to spur our creative thinking and that of the staff and not do the self-censoring that I know I'm sometimes prone to do. Uh, this would be... Uh, this would be really expensive or how do we get all, you know, these groups together? That kind of thinking. So if we truly mean think outside the box, I'm willing to listen to Dave Jacobson's crazy ideas, you know, because there might be a piece of that that we can build on. I think we really do need to enter into that process with a spirit of energy and openness and true creativity.
Great, thank you. Alderman Verber, Mike?
And it's really asking us to invest in a comprehensive plan. So we need to have, you know, whatever that plan may be, the level, our expectations of that plan, but to really have a global view of our city and how do we best approach these goals, which are very important goals. And I guess from a standpoint of ten new home builds, I think it's a starting process that we learn from and then we can perhaps roll it up to Alderman Jacobson's point to a higher number once we learn from those, that first ten.
Okay, let's move on to transportation. The three specifics that came out of that particular category, a transportation summit to address public transit issues, we need to address the handicap parking issues in our community, and we would like to construct wayfinding signage. I guess that means how to get from here to there. Open it up to that conversation. Alderman Fanouk, and welcome back. Hope you're feeling better. You look better.
I am, thank you. You know, obviously, the transportation summit on the public transit issues, a lot of that works underway through the DSATs and the ongoing connections we're trying to create between the voluntary action center transit system and what Husky Line is already doing. What we're trying to do there is to eliminate some of the duplicationist services and then be able to provide a broader sense of service across the community. And by including the number of riders that the Husky Line serves, we're actually be eligible for more federal money for operations. And I think that'll help out quite a bit as we go along. As we move towards that, though, I know that from the university and on our part, Tim Holderman had worked, done a great deal of work on the construct of the new system and new staffing. And along the way, hopefully, that we will be able to get that transportation center grant from the federal government. So I think some of those things are already underway, which is a very positive step. And, you know, both Anne Marie and I sit on DSATs, Jerry, you do also, so that we have a better sense of where that's going, more so than probably the rest of the folks in the room.
Yeah, I think we're making some really good progress there. Anything else on transportation? Yes, Alderman Jacobs.
In slimming our list down to ten, which is going to be very difficult, I'm trying to find how to drop two. I may have to steal a couple of Alderman Markworth's dots tonight. In slimming that list down, obviously, we're setting the highest priorities of ten. And I think some of these things, like addressing handicap parking, even installing electric car charging stations, while they're probably not going to make the list of ten for most of us because we have so many things to get through, those are very easy, low-impact things that could be being done in the background, whether it's a priority tonight or not. I mean, to address those things doesn't take much time, is what I'd say.
Absolutely. I couldn't agree with you more, you know. Yeah, Alderman in favor?
So I listened to the discussion during the meeting, but I didn't hear anyone ask this, or at least it was hard. Maybe y'all were up at the board. Are electric car charging stations now universal? Or are they still tied to one, you know, if I have a Nissan Leaf, that's the only thing that we can charge in DeKalb? Or is it?
Bill?
Actually, for the most part, they've become more universal than they were when they first started out. One of the nice things about the electric car charging stations is there's a number of grant opportunities. So we may be able to get those done at no cost to the city. I know the Clean Cities Coalition out of the City of Chicago that does the metro area, they have various grant opportunities that I'm aware of and that I can help Tim Holderman follow up on.
If you've seen the boxes, a lot of them, they have four plugs and those are the four Toyota, Honda, they're the major Chevy. They all run off of the same power voltage, effectively, the quick charge. They have different connections and the boxes usually have three or four different options of the major manufacturers.
You know, and if we had a few of those around town, what message would that send? What message would that send to out-of-towners, even to some of our own, what I would call townies? What, you know, it would be a good message, in my opinion, so.
It would make it accessible for a whole bunch of Teslas from Naperville to show up in DeKalb, spend the day here, spend some money here while they're here.
Okay, very good. Let's move along. That was our one, our third of the ten categories. Let's move on to category number four, and that's the airport. Two specific ideas came out of the, in the airport arena during our first goal-setting session that we needed. One was that we need an airport strategy meeting. The other was to make the airport financially self-sufficient. Now, Tony, if you don't have any thoughts on this, I know you're big into, you're a pilot and you're interested in this, but I'd open up to any conversation regarding the airport and how that relates to some of our goal-setting, that, again, playing into what it is that we can afford, either short-term or long-term. Kate?
I would think that the, an airport strategy meeting would be critical in terms of the airport eventually becoming self-sufficient. I think its direction and that as a goal needs to be very clear. So I would almost combine those two.
And you know what we need, in my opinion? We need a regional airport meeting, a regional airport summit. This should not be the DeKalb summit. This should be a regional because that facility out there needs to be more of a, well, it already is in many respects, a regional center for users of the airport. So, yes, any other thoughts on airport? Tony?
The one thirty-nine certification, I thought we were pretty close to actually achieving that already. So it's one of those that, again, once they get that, I believe that allows air service in and out of the airport, which could help with the self-sufficiency of the airport.
Right. Is everybody aware of the one thirty-nine? The one thirty-nine section, basically, in layman's term, would allow us to attract more passenger flights that would allow, for example, football teams to fly out of here and into here. Right now, basketball and other gymnastics and those folks, they come in and go out, but we cannot accommodate a larger passenger. We have had a meeting with Airport Manager Tom Cleveland. We had representatives from Northern who would benefit from this big time in terms of their athletic department. So, yes, I think that didn't pop up only because one person put it on the board, but as is the case with so many of these categories, some of these things, as it was suggested, we're doing already. And while they were good, either short-term or long-term goals, hey, if we're doing them already, they're probably not going to end up on the board necessarily. Anything else on the airport? Okay, let's move along to category number five, government operations. We have four specifics that I thought would be appropriate here. One is the Committee of the Whole on Meeting Logistics. Where do we have meetings? Are they recorded? Who attends the meetings? How is the seating in the meetings? Et cetera, et cetera. How are they posted? When is that posted? So much. I think we need to do that. That was a little editorializing, yeah, sorry. It's felt that we need to really talk about our Emergency Operations Center, which has been on the back burner for many, many years, but something that was felt during our planning session, our goal-setting session, that we should talk about. Evaluate our city's structure and organization. That came up. Also, that we have adequate staffing within our means staffing plan and cost. In other words, we've got to live within our means as we look at staffing our city. And those are the four items that came up. In many ways remarkably different, but in other ways remarkably similar. So I'd add, I'd ask for any comments. Alderman Fagan, Pat?
Yeah, that's the first thing that jumped out at me on the long-term evaluate city structure, organization, adequate living within our means on staffing. That, again, goes to a twelve-month to eighteen-month, and we can get that done sooner. I'd like to see that more in the short-term than a long-term. And that's all I have to say.
Okay. Alderman Rico. Pat, or Kate?
I think this, Emergency Operations Center planning, especially given the incident in Florida last week, it points out the importance and the necessity of, unfortunately, of having plans and detailed plans for handling a wide range of emergencies. And, you know, I'm confident that, you know, our police department and fire department with emergency medical personnel, you know, have given thought to this, but I think really, you know, for the community also to know that we're prepared and we can deal with issues would be important.
Any other thoughts in that regard? Alderman Verber?
Would agree with Alderman Fagan, but I guess from a standpoint, evaluate city structure, organization, and I scanned through the rest of the topics. I'm not seeing anything about code enforcement. And I think that may be placed here, but we've seen what issues that leads to. So, again, I think among our priorities should be a consideration for how are we addressing code enforcement now? Maybe retrace and learn from some of the history or lack thereof and hopefully send a message that our residents should deserve quality residence to live in. Our commercial properties should be all safe and inviting and accessible for our community. And we certainly need to remain business-friendly, yes, but also need a balance of what that requires from a standpoint of code enforcement investment.
Next category, budget, finance, fiscal planning. There were five specifics that came out of our meeting. The first I looked at and I said, "How can we do that?" But I'm going to let you know that it is up on their board. Lower or freeze taxes while maintaining services. Can we do it? Perhaps. Reduce operating costs to those within our means. Reduce operating costs to those within our means. Define realistic within our means pay schedules. That's what was written up there. I'm going to change that around verbiage. Basically, it says, "We're going to pay in the city of DeKalb what are, what is realistic for not only this region but for municipalities this size, et cetera." Does that clarify it better? At least it does, it did for me when I was thinking of it. Three other specifics. Address pension obligations and have long-term balanced budget planning. Hopefully, we are in that process now, but what it says to me, since four folks put something similar to that on the board at the library, that the emphasis and the importance of this budget and planning so that it makes budgeting a little bit more palatable and working with staff on that, I think it makes it a better process. So, budget, finance, fiscal planning. What comments might you have in that regard? Alderman Rico?
Address pension obligations is really critical for me. Address pension obligations is critical for me. We have an obligation to those who worked in the city under certain assumptions and whether at this point those are viewed as excessive or unusual, I think in many cases they aren't particularly for those who put themselves in danger, police and fire. And we just can't walk away from those obligations. We need to responsibly take a look at them.
Alderman Fagan?
You know, I'm seeing some of this follow the other. When we talked about government operations and adequate within our means staffing plan along with operating costs within our means. So now we've got government, governmental operations and budget and finance fiscal planning. So I'm seeing one help the other in this. You know, you kind of get, you can see them blend in a little bit where one's going to help the other.
Bill, Alderman Fanouk?
Well, along with Kate's comments on pension obligations, you know, we have to, again, think outside the box a little bit and not just think of how are we going to maintain the payment rate that we need to maintain, but how can we decrease potential future obligations? Does that mean we take a longer look at contracting out more positions rather than making them in-house and subject to pension obligations? So those are some of the things that, long-term, we need to look at, and that goes right hand in hand with, in terms of appropriate staffing and things like that. So just another way to look at that also.
Alderman Jacobson?
Again, while we were looking at taxes that are amongst the highest in the nation, something doesn't jive. If we're paying the most in taxes and we have, at best, an adequate level of services, again, I don't think we're four or five or six hundred employees, too many like Cook County is, something, the equation doesn't work somewhere. And I think, again, in looking at those pensions, I would agree with Bill, that we need to figure out what we can generate in real estate taxes. We know that number. We know what we're doing now that's already breaking the backs of our residents. And rather than turn around and say, "Well, we have three hundred staff, so then this is the tax rate," it's got to come from the other way around. This is the tax rate, how many staff can we then have? And that's how we have to change the perception. It's always been the tail wagging the dog, and at some point, the dog is so buried down into the dirt trying to figure out where his tail is that we don't, the dog wants to leave. The dog doesn't want to be here. The taxpayers can't afford more. It's not like we can just keep raising taxes. And looking at our internal projections, next year at eleven or twelve percent increase to make up for not doing it this year, that's not reality. I mean, it's not. If we turned around and raised taxes twelve percent or fifteen percent next year just to make the minimum pension payments, we're in bigger, we're creating the spiral that makes it harder and harder to make those obligations. So, again, at some point, I know the state's looking at a freeze for the very same reason. At some point, you have to draw a line in the sand and say, "This is what we can afford" and staff based on that number. And if we can't do it, then we have to, again, contract out or start And if we can't do it, then we have to, again, contract out or start finding part-time opportunities or start pushing in our next round of negotiations, not for staff, or for annual COLAs and increases, but for give-backs and take-backs to afford what we can afford in this community.
I'm not so sure, Dave, that what we accomplished during our budget process this past November, December, and into January will not result in some areas of our staffing, and I'm thinking primarily of Public Works right now. I think we're going to have some proposals from our staff on things that we're just not going to be able to do going forward. And if that means that we keep taxes where they are or freeze them while lowering services, sometimes we have to bite that bullet. I'm not forecasting, I'm not projecting anything, but we need to realize what it is that we have, what we've asked our taxpayers to participate in, and as you suggest, it's up to here now for them. We've heard that, have we not?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Any other comments? Yeah, Mike?
And back to pensions, a great discussion as to setting our sights on those. Again, the impact of our TIF considerations on pension, and we've had some further discussion about that. Is TIF a good move considering where we sit with our pension obligation? We, what we're doing, if we look to, someone commented, "No TIF transfers to general fund." Well, what we're doing, and I think that's $791,000 this year in TIF transfers to the general fund, we're taking that captured property tax money and funding further operations, which is more pension obligations. So I think it's a circle that we really have to look at closely before we rush into another TIF. Can we better contain that transfer number down to a more realistic level for what it truly costs to administer the TIF?
Yeah, it's going to be a key, key decision, key discussion. Alderman Jacobson?
Quick follow-up on that, only because I was thinking about it as I was walking in the door today. At the last round of meetings, there was discussion both from the public and staff regarding TIF. And one of the members of the public made the comment that it's causing the school district and our other taxing bodies to raise taxes to cover their operations because we are siphoning off that money into the TIF. And again, I think that was slightly unfair because we have made them whole and given the school district and other entities sizable TIF funding for some of their projects. I believe they're about whole based on the last make-whole agreement and the surpluses we've declared for them and those things. The reality is, while much of their burden has been made up for them, the city's has not. And I think that was one of the comments that came out at the end of the last meeting when staff has said, you know, "The downtown and the TIFs really aren't taking the focus away, and it's not fair to say we're taking the focus away in other areas to support those TIFs." I would disagree. Again, in siphoning off that money, we have frozen ourselves in the downtown, one of our major tax generators, at the rates of the 1980s. The services have gone up for that neighborhood, and it's the other neighborhoods that are paying that cost because the TIF is going into a segregated account. So I think in reality that the concern is that we're forcing the tax rates on other bodies up. I think the bigger concern, especially that we can control through the TIFs, is the reality that we have siphoned so much off the top and then again done TIF transfers to cover operations that those services and the pensions and those things that should be coming into our coffers and going into those things aren't really being focused on enough.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's move right along. Three specific areas listed on the board identified at our goal-setting session on the 24th. Address and implement a comprehensive fleet program. Address and implement a long-term street funding program. And devise a financial plan for a new or renovated city hall. Any thoughts there? Alderman Norrico?
I know it is not popular to talk about City Hall, but having seen some of the inner workings and even as a non-professional, looked at the HVAC system and heard stories about, you know, what may be underneath the tiles and/or is underneath tiles and ceiling tiles. I think it's incumbent on us to ensure that both those that we charge to help run the city and therefore work in City Hall, as well as residents who come in here for public services, are in a safe, reasonable environment. And I'm not convinced that this building is, you know, 100%, you know, safe, especially long-term. I mean, what happens, you know, when we have another cold freeze, which we almost certainly will? And our, you know, heating system gives up the ghost and the pipes freeze and, you know, and that kind of scenario has happened in, you know, our homes to one degree or another. So it is a really possible scenario here. Do we want to make decisions on this facility or on these services when we're under crisis?
Thank you. Any thoughts on any of the capital planning specifics? The fleet program, the street funding program, which we have talked about almost ad nauseam, but it certainly is a concern. Today, I, if I may, Mike, I want to share the exchange that I know you had with our Public Works Director of tremendous potholes underneath the Union Pacific Bridge over in Annie Glidden Road. And I appreciate you, not only as a resident, but as the Alderman there, to bring that to his attention. I understand it has been patched. But, yeah, we, in this weather here, it's just going to get worse over the next couple of weeks before it gets better. Dave, just a, Tony, did you have a comment? Okay, Dave?
It's not just there. That was a major issue, Seventh Street at the tracks, Fourth Street at the tracks. I mean, in seeing in the last week or two how bad it's gotten in some of these areas, and that'll happen in these freeze thaw cycles, this is the worst thing that can happen to our streets. I mean, our streets are Swiss cheese. And while I understand that City Hall is certainly a priority for staff, the amount of residents that come into this building is limited. The amount of residents that drive our roads every day is unlimited, and we have the garbage trucks pounding them, we have the semis in some areas pounding them. I mean, streets have to be one of our top priorities. Now, we know we can't afford the six or seven or nine million that we need to put into streets to start improving them, but at the very least, I think we have to commit to the 3.7 million number.
3.7.
The last number, just to keep and maintain them for now until we can try to figure out a new funding revenue source. The reality of this building is a decision was made before all of your time not to do this building. When we had the discussion about the police department, we knew we had issues in this building, and those conversations had already been held, understanding that we were maxing out our bond rating effectively by building that police station. It was very well noted at that point that until that building was paid off, that that was it. That was all the marbles at that point. If we got a new police station for 13 million, that City Hall would have to make do for 10 or 15 or 20 years. The reality of the systems in the building are, it's an old building. It's not great. But there are still parts available. They are becoming more and more expensive as they get scarce. But boiler systems are relatively simple to maintain. It's a gas boiler that heats up some water and it goes through your pipes. I mean, it's, it's not rocket science. Sometimes finding those parts is a little bit more difficult, obviously, and more expensive when you're in a rush or emergency situation. Being in buildings that had boilers that were older than this building, again, they require maintenance, it's expensive to operate them, they're not all of that, they're not nearly as efficient as modern technology is by any means, but they're functional. And you can almost always get them up and running again even when they are down. Again, you're talking 10, 20, $30,000 sometimes to get them up and running in an emergency situation. But if the difference is 3.6 million for this building or 3.6 million for roads, we have to make do. We made our decision with the police station and we committed to that building, and we've prettied up this building and put as much lipstick on it as we can at this point for the time being. The reality is, we're going to have to make do. We don't really have any other funding options as our bond limit is maxed and we cannot raise more taxes and a sales tax I don't think would be fair for a single municipal building. If this building goes down, the other reality is, we have two other buildings across the street that are about the same size as this building in terms of staffing-wise, that in an emergency or in a pinch, we could transfer operations over there. Would it be ideal? Would it be a good week for the staff to transition over there? No, I'm sure it wouldn't be ideal for them. I'm sure it wouldn't be delightful. But in the reality, we needed another facility and an absolute shutdown or emergency service minus the court, obviously. We have the space in that building as a backup at this point.
We have three more categories to go through before we get our exercise and get out of our chairs. And that's public safety, community, special events, and then finally NIU. Let's go to public safety. Our four specifics that we were identified, that we identified, goal-setting and the reduction of crime, how we do that. Explore installing cameras downtown. Reduce crime and be viewed as safe, that perception, and/or reality, obviously, and improve mental health services, which has, as we see, has become very, very much in the same conversation most recently. So I'd open up the floor to any thoughts on how we should address some of the public safety specifics that we identified? Or do we all agree, whoops, or do we all agree that those four seem to be it and we don't need any further discussion? Kate?
I think that, you know, once again, there are some issues that really are related. Reducing crime goes, improving mental health services, I think, goes, you know, is tied in with reducing crime. Also, one of the reasons I like that goal is that it's far more specific and far more measurable than just reduce crime or be viewed as safe. Those are worthwhile goals, but again, what does that mean?
I think we all could accept the reality, including our rank and file in chief, that we have been forced, in many cases, at many times in the last couple of years, to be reactive to major incidents. And I think, obviously, there's the PR burden of managing those major incidents. There's the reality that they're very well-publicized when, in reality, the danger was very minimal to the actual public and/or residents. But I think the reality remains that we have gang issues, we have drug issues, we have issues of people from out of town coming to our town for whatever reason, again, because they think it's Mayberry when we catch most or all of them anyway when they commit crimes, because they see it as a drug market, because they see it as just a place to go that's out of the heat of their own neighborhoods. We have to start tackling that proactively. We know where most of the crime is coming from. They're very centered in specific areas in our community, my ward being one of them, that we have to figure out a way to combat. And obviously, there's dozens of laws that relate to some of the issues we're facing there, whether it be the panhandling that's very apparent and very risky and worrisome to most of the residents in the area, whether it be the gang violence, whether it be some of the housing things, again, and related to property codes and related to some of our known slumlord properties and known slum properties where you're getting six and seven and eight major cases and felons out of those buildings a year. We know where they're coming from. We know who's renting to them. We need to find a way to make sure that's not occurring. If it is, we as a city council have to put teeth into the crime-free ordinance. While I know there was significant pushback when we followed it, the reality is, good landlords aren't dealing with our crime-free housing department very much. They don't need to. If they're running a good property with good tenants that they're background checking and credit checking, they're not dealing with crime-free. It's the slumlords that because there was some fear on the onset of the program that are getting around the three strikes and you're out by moving a tenant to another unit or another building within their property stable, they know they're felons, they know they're criminals, they know they're gang bangers, but they want the rent. And drug dealers pay their rent because clearly they have income coming in. Those are the things we have to get proactive with. And again, with limited resources, that's often very tough. And I think it's unfair for me to just say, "Wave the law in chief and make these problems go away." But in terms of how do we reduce crime, we can't be reactive to gunshots. We can't be reactive to the issues. We know what the issues are, we know where the issues are, we know who the issues are, and we know what, who's supporting those issues. Let's go after those four things and make it very uncomfortable for people that are here to do the community and the residents harm and move them on to the next town because they're not welcome here.
Yeah, I don't mind reactivity, David. What I do mind is reactivity and then not reacting in a positive way. And the positive way is the proactivity that you talk about. Our city clerk has, Sue, you have a comment?
Well, just based on some of the discussion that I'm hearing you guys talk about now, I think that if you moved improving mental health services up to a short-term goal, even if it's complex, because it is, obviously, you're going to combat a lot of those issues that you're talking about and a lot of the issues that you guys are talking about immediately. So.
We had certainly made our short list, so up here, and we'll see, but I agree with you, the mental health issue is something that is certainly part and parcel of this entire crime scenario. Any other thoughts? Let's move along. Community, special events, and attractions. We have five, count them, five specifics. Review city regulations and adapt to encourage more special events and festivals. We had a presentation a couple of weeks ago on that. Explore farmer's market options. A food and wine trail. Develop outreach and marketing strategies to accentuate the positives in our community. And finally, to increase tourism downtown, including implementing, to a better extent, the Egyptian theater as an art center. A large, broad area within that. Do we have any comments? Alderman Faver and then Alderman Jacobson?
I think, you know, so the first bullet point, again, that kind of goes, again, to what is business friendliness? You know, it, obviously, it made the, it made the short list of review regulations. So clearly, there's been some feedback that if I want to bring an event or if I want to host a, host a party or celebration or do something in DeKalb, that there is... a, host a party or celebration or do something in DeKalb, that there is potentially some undue regulation that, that I have to wade through and figure out. And so, yeah, I'm glad to see that that's on the list.
Good.
Dave? I think the reality to touch on most of the other issues that are yellowed, highlighted on this list is enable to support existing businesses, enable to support our downtown property stock, enable to support a lot of these things that are on our list. The reality we have is we need a major traffic generator here to help support those things. And again, I think we have to start looking at how many people that really the Egyptian Theater can bring in. When you compare them to someone like NIU Athletics that brings in 200,000 out-of-town visitors a year, that we really don't participate in to support, when they're probably our largest out-of-town traffic generator year-round. Again, I think we're focused very narrowly on what we have and the limited traffic generators we do have, and we keep pumping more and more and more money into those just to keep them stable. When, in order to do a lot of the things we want to do and in order to bring in that out-of-town revenue, you need something that's gonna generate 100 or 200,000 people a year. And the Egyptian Theater is never going to do that, no matter how much money we put into it. A steam museum would have never created that kind of traffic. We have to start thinking creatively. We have to start thinking differently. And we so often bong ourselves down on what we have and the limited negative, or the limited positive traffic generators we have. For us to do this long-term and to be stable long-term, we need much more, much larger, and much more traffic generated by those things than anything existing in the downtown can provide us.
Okay, thank you. Any other thoughts on that? Alderman Verbic?
Having attended a number of events at DeKalb High School, there's also a significant impact out there with the number of out-of-town visitors that we attract to the high school for events, whether those are for performance, theater, athletics. Again, a number of people coming in and out of Dresser Road. So thinking about signage and things like that, how do we, as a city, better capture those folks that are coming in? The last acapella performance competition out there hosted high schools from the tri-state area. And on March 10th, there's another event which will likely sell out, so 800 seats that will also, again, attract people from a multi-state area that are heading out to Dresser Road, they're getting out to the high school. How could we perhaps capture some of that traffic and guide that toward our, our commercial areas, for example?
Should we not be a community where we have a diversity of venues, a diversity of attractions? So that whether we're one of the 200,000 people that is going to an NIU athletic event, whether we're one of the 100,000 people that are, that the Egyptian Theater perhaps is bringing in yearly to see a show, whether or not we're going to the high school to see something, whether or not we're going on a smaller scale to the Stagecoach Theater, we need to realize that this, it takes, it takes a number of these different facets of entertainment. And, you know, one of the things you've talked about, Tony, is a calendar, getting a calendar of events. And it is not the easiest thing in the world to do, I'm told, but I know a number of different organizations are trying. And so what it all boils down to is where do we put our money? Where do we, as a city council, look and say, this is where we can assist? Because in the long-term, it's gonna bring revenue into our city. Does that make sense? Okay. Let's go on to our final point. Interestingly, in terms of categories, Northern Illinois University. There is no doubt in my mind, before I read these three, that this community is beset with so much promise because of what NIU brings to the table. But right now, we're in an era of problems, so much exacerbated by the enrollment drop in NIU and the things that happened because of that enrollment drop. We know what's happening in Antiglidd North. We know why we are proactively, if you will, addressing that particular area. But to suggest that Northern Illinois University is something that is not part of our community is just nonsensical. So let's look at the three items under the category of NIU that we looked at as a city council during our session. Someone said, well, a number of folks said, we need to work with NIU to resolve Antiglidd North and Greek Row issues. We need to improve communications with Northern Illinois University, and we need to assist in whatever way we can as a city with NIU enrollment. Any comments on this last category? And then we'll put up some dots on the board. Yeah, Kate?
Again, assist with NIU enrollment. I'm not sure, you know, in what ways. I mean, certainly, we, I, I know we've taken part in activities to ensure that students and family members, you know, know what is here. The bus tours, you know, at the beginning of the fall semester. The book on, you know, dining options and, you know, those are two things that come to mind immediately. But that, once again, that just seems so vague to me.
Alderman Fanouk?
You know, Mike and I and Dave probably have tighter ties to university than the rest of council. But, you know, one of the simple things that, that I do to try and insist on enrollment is just, I make myself available as a volunteer on open house days. And I'm there and answer questions. And I get asked, why isn't Alderman here? And I say, it's because it's how important the university is to the city. And it's just little things like that that help in, in a number of ways that, you know, the students know that the city cares about the university and really relieves the parents a lot, too, their, some of their concerns, just by being there and answering questions and, and talking it up. Now, obviously, the three of us would have a, because of our connections, have a much better opportunity to do that. But there's no way that any of us couldn't help in certain events like that, whether it be the move-in picnic, move-in day, or whatever.
Yeah.
It's just little things like that that help assist trying to draw students.
I think all of us in our own special ways, and we probably would surprise ourselves if we wrote down the number of things that we've done to help Northern. Kate, you organized a beloved community dinner last night. Who did we have there? Students, undocumented students. We're talking about Northern Illinois. By doing that, you're assisting Northern Illinois University. So don't sell yourself short, don't sell this city short as it relates to what we can do by sitting at the table and perhaps even asking the question, what can we do? What is the best thing that we can do as a partner with you? So, David?
I don't know how many of you have had the opportunity to go down during high school football season to Texas, but there is no better demonstration of how a city increases the atmosphere that I've seen, even at university campuses, of how much support the community gives. The football program on those nights, again, when students are coming here, A, do we know about it? B, what are we doing to make this look like a fun place for them to be when they're coming on these tours? When they're coming onto campus? And we have issues in the city very close to campus, whether it be in Mike's Ward on East Lakin Highway with closed-down hotels that look dilapidated and derelict, whether they're coming into our downtown area and we have basically really no engagement whatsoever in terms of signage or marketing or, or welcome. We've made some inroads when we did the, the vinyl prints on some of the empty units downtown. We made some inroads when we did the scheduling up on the old Otto's Building. We've started that process to a point, but when you go down to many of our competitors, whether it's Iowa, whether it's Iowa State, whether it's ISU, whether it's Illinois, I urge you to go down during August, during the move-in time, during July, during the walk-through times. The city puts on a show. I, I mean, they advertise, they flaunt their, what they have to offer the student to come there, both for the city's benefit and the university's benefit. And I don't think we've hit the note that we need to hit yet in terms of what we can do to start bringing kids here. Again, it's a downward spiral. As enrollment drops, we have more issues and we blame each other back and forth and everyone's suffering from it.
Yeah, we don't wanna play the blame game either.
Break that cycle and do something different that hopefully we can help them turn things around.
So.
I think one thing that we could all do just as a city council is we could attend more of the NIU events together, like as a group, make more of a presence. That way, the students can see that there's more of a, of a, an attempt to bond with them as well.
Any other comments on Northern? Yes, Tony?
I was gonna, so one of the things I had put on my appendix B was, you know, work on the transportation. But, you know, Kate had mentioned the, the dining menu and things like that. And, you know, last year, they did the, they brought some kids downtown on the buses and they were like, I didn't know this existed, I didn't know there was a skate park downtown. And it's, yeah, it's some of those things to, to highlight those. And then part of that, again, was, you know, again, get, get more bus stops, better hours downtown, the Husky Line and things like that. And that goes to the fourth one, to bring, bring more events downtown.
What a good, good conversation we've had tonight. It's now 6:20. Let's take 6:30, take a break if you need to, but let's go up, take your 10 dots, put those on the 10 areas that you think are the most important. And from there, we're doing, then going to take a look and see if we can identify if any that really pop out at us. But we will then put those together and, and identify those as focus areas that this city council feels we can, we can approach, we can attack over the next several months and several years. Before we do that, I'd like to ask Admiral Igora, who purposefully is the only staff member here tonight, I'd like you to ask, to, to give us any comments that you have, any, what, what kind of reaction? Are we, we're not a bunch of crazies, are we? Or?
Absolutely not.
And if we are, we're thinking out of the box, right?
I've been taking detailed notes, as the city clerk has as well. And so now, I've just been listening and you've addressed a lot of the questions as the mayor and I met this afternoon in prep for this meeting. Part of my role was gonna be to facilitate or ask questions, to ask for clarification. You've done that yourself. I mean, the mayor kind of prompted that at the beginning of the meeting. So you've kind of delved into what you've meant on some of these items. I would just say that I think what's helpful after the council goes up and, and figures out where the dots are is then we can count those and then you could summarize where the, the main items. What I would say, what we will do as staff is the next step after you've identified the goals is, one, we'll take this document and revise it based upon the prioritizations that we hear from you tonight. And then, two, as we start, this is our first official budget workshop. As we continue these budget workshops once a month, we will now take the goals that you've set. And as the various departments come before you, and right now, our plan probably for March is going to be police, the police department and HR departments and possibly IT. So either two or three departments that night. And one of the things we're gonna do is we're gonna take those goals that relate to those particular departments, and we're gonna have a follow-up discussion with you to understand even better. Because what you identify here are the goals, and then ultimately, what we wanna come back to is with options on strategies and actions. Because as you talk about the goals, we're gonna wanna know specifically, what actions do you want us to do? And that may involve the metrics, as you've talked about, Alderman Verbic. And so then we'll take that information and then, so if an item, as an example, involves a cost element, we'll have that discussion with you to say, we want to know, because if that's not a priority, I mean, then the next discussion is, does that happen in the next 12 months or is that going to be an item that we budget in fiscal year 19? And I'll use another Alderman Verbic example. So we talk about a comprehensive plan. That's something that's been in the budget that in previous years we've eliminated because of funding issues. If that's a priority, then we'll talk about what are the costs of that. And then we know, based upon those, the budget workshops with you, what your priorities are. So then we build the budget based upon the direction that we're getting now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's put our dots up. These are the 10 top items that we've talked about tonight of the, we're probably at, what, 35 items or something like that. And then when we finish this, we'll wrap it up for the night.
You got enough room, Jerry?
I can fit through there. I'll push Alderman Markworth's dots up. Would you hand me that sheet?
Oh, absolutely. This one here? Can I have my question, Jerry? Cool, because the other one doesn't go all the way around. I was gonna say, I got another one if you need it.
In the saving end?
So be fair.
Yeah.
How did you get that?
Huh?
Too many chances, not enough odds.
Down here.
I was working right out.
I'm gonna wanna see where people are, except for that short.
Yeah, so.
All right.
Used all your dots?
Most times, they only give you five, so you got double them out.
Yeah.
You are?
I have more.
Look up.
Thirty-five.
Don't go pushing.
I can.
What?
I don't know your parts.
No, I have one more dot and I had identified. No, it's okay. This is, I like this. It is six. Seven. Eight. Nine, ten. Okay, I'm gonna go back through this.
Hey, Jerry? What I could do after break, after everyone's...
Thirty-five.
Don't go pushing me.
I can't. No, I have one more dot and I have identified. No, it's okay. This is, I like this. It is six. Seven. Eight. Nine, ten. Okay, I'm gonna go back through this.
Hey, Jerry, what I could do after break, after everyone's done, I'll go up there and count the dots and I'll put the number and circle it next to it.
Yeah, or just circle the whole thing. For example, I see one here with four dots.
Yeah.
That should be circled.
That one over there's got five.
Here's one over here.
And I'll put the number next to each one, so you've got the number.
That'd be great.
Hey, Jerry, just so you know, it's pretty cool, Byron's, what Byron's showing on TV.
I beg your pardon?
I thought you'd appreciate what Byron is showing on TV.
Yeah, that's great.
Or on camera.
I still don't understand. I still end up with one dot.
Somebody secretly put an extra one on your little piece of paper.
All the ones that are just one. Alderman Fanoukan?
Okay, let's wrap it up. If you've still got five dots, you're just too imprecise of.
I, I can see at least several that are one-dot ones that were mine. Oh, wow.
But there are some up there that are, that make a lot of sense, but they may not, they may not even have a dot.
Oh, excuse me.
Well, because what you said, one dot left and so on. Did I put it down?
You missed it earlier.
Probably because there's only one dot.
So, I missed you earlier.
You did?
Yeah, I left you a message.
See you later, too.
I was busy doing the night.
Well, okay, let's just go for broke. It's debated.
You're it.
Blood drawn tomorrow. One of the things on the sheet is don't eat candy. It's got to come like the M&amp;M's, like. Come on.
Now, increase focus on areas outside downtown and develop plans for areas outside of town are really, it could be the same.
Those are the same, aren't they?
But is it short-term or long-term? The one is short-term.
Okay, if we can get everybody together, well, I'm going to go up the board and make some kind of a synopsis, if I may, as to where we might be. And then, I will ask our staff to put together this list, which is gleaning this down just a tad, although I see a lot of fours up there. So, let me get up to the...
There's one five and I, I start thinking.
Okay, right. I'm going to just basically talk about the fives and the fours, maybe the threes. Under economic and business development, it's obvious that the key consideration that we ought to be looking at is to create a business-friendly municipal code and UDO. That all ties, again, into code compliance, developing, making, making us a more business-friendly community, if you will. So.
I was just gonna ask you.
That certainly will make our list. On residential growth, think outside the box. Thank you. Think outside the box. For the benefit of those watching at home, we pretty much determined that the, under economic and business development, the key goal should be to create a business-friendly municipal code and a UDO. Under residential growth, think outside the box in terms of growth, rooftops, whatever, whatever some of those outside-of-the-box ideas might be. Under transportation, maybe this shouldn't have surprised me, but I guess it did, is that enough felt that we should have a summit, we should have a meeting on transportation in our areas. As part and parcel of that, as Alderman Fanoukan had mentioned earlier, I think we got some exciting, short-term things that are happening already there. Bill, when are we going to roll out the merger? This summer, right? Is that?
Yes, Mayor, I can tell you at Monday's committee of the whole meeting, Public Works Director Tim Holdman making a presentation on the transit consolidation.
Okay, good.
So, he'll have more of the timeline in there, but you'll have this before you Monday night.
Good, good. Yeah, I feel real good about that. Airport strategy meeting, four folks, thought that was very, very important. We take a look at that particular facility that we have within the city of DeKalb, which, and I've often called that as an underutilized facet of our community. Government operations, pretty well split, both relatively longer-term specifics. One is to evaluate our city structure organization and the other one is to make sure that we're living within our means in terms of the cost of staffing City Hall. So, those go sort of hand in hand. Under budget finance fiscal planning, we should reduce our operating costs. We have to live within our means. We need to address pension obligations. How we can do that, I think will make for some interesting discussion. And then, this, this idea of long-term balanced budget planning, very, very important. Capital planning, address and implement our long-term street funding. My sense is that while we've been kicking that can down the road a little bit too long, we have a better feel coming out of our last budget meetings this past year. We have a better feel now on what our public works and what we have taken a look at potential figures on what we might be able to do. The $3.7 million that Alderman Jacobson was mentioning, the $1.7 this year, so, yeah, that's, that's key. Under public safety, continue to reduce crime. And as we do that, hopefully, do whatever we can to pass a word that this is a safe community. We have areas in our city, obviously, that may be deemed unsafe at certain times of the day or night, but this is a safe city. This is a livable city. We need to promote that. We need to review city regulations and adapt to encourage more special events and festivals. And finally, under NIU, I think we've pretty much has consent, had consensus that we need to work with the university to resolve the Antiglen North and the issues in Greek Row. And we'll give that major responsibility to our First Ward Alderman. How's that sound, David? No, we all need to work together on that and we appreciate what Bill and Dave Jacobson have done as it relates to Antiglen North and being council liaisons. So, have I captured what we think is the crux of what we determined tonight? We'll reduce those to writing, get those to the hands of not only our, our city council, but I think Finance Advisory Committee ought to see these at some point, because we're going to be meeting with them, co-meeting with Finance Advisory Committee, it's important. And not only see what their reaction is, but to make them as part and parcel of this entire process. So, having that, having said that, I would go around the table and see if you have any observations, not only in this goal-setting budget workshop that we've had tonight, but also if you'd like to say anything. Before, before we have that, following the agenda, we have public participation. Anybody care to say anything under public participation? No? We have a scant crowd tonight, but we have thousands who are watching us on television. Tens of thousands, yes. Okay, we'll start with our First Ward Alderman, Dave Jacobson.
It's a step in the right direction.
Yep.
That's all I can say. These meetings are, have been sorely lacking in my time here and to reset the goals and reset the focus as a council, again, without a whole lot of staff involvement, without a whole lot of other outsiders here, is so obvious that, again, in many of these, it was so clear to see that there are several of us that believe those should be the focus. So, I appreciate that and I think it's certainly a step toward turning the things we need to turn around here around.
Good. Thank you, Dave. Alderman Fanoukan, Bill?
Well, just in, in looking at the sheet, I, you know, in some ways surprised and in some ways not surprised that there's no one item that all seven of us agreed on. I think that...
That would have been a miracle.
Well, no, because it just shows that the wide variety of what we believe the different priorities are as we move forward. Obviously, there's a, one with five dots and then a number of them with fours and those will be the top things that we have to look at. But I think that there's a lot of good that's gonna, that has come out of this discussion and will continue to, as we move forward.
Thank you, Bill. Alderman Fanoukan, Pat?
I think it's a great idea on how we're starting out here. I'm looking at it and I'm looking at realistic goals. And this has really turned out well. This is the easy part, the hard part's trying to implement this. And I think where we're, where I'm looking at, we can reach that, especially on, so the short-term and the long-term goals.
Thank you. Alderman Orico? Kate?
I appreciate the efforts of my fellow council members in terms of really taking a thoughtful, deliberate approach to this process. While I don't always agree with them, I do think that they all came here tonight really wanting to come up with workable plans that would improve the city. So, as always, you know, it will be challenging to, you know, see how this all play, you know, works out. The old saying, may you live in interesting times. We are, but exciting and I think very positive.
Thank you, Kate. Alderman Verbeek, Mike?
I'm very encouraged as to how quickly we've come to consensus on those things that we feel are most important for the city. And certainly, the things that we agree on here, I reflect on Alderman Markworth's comments as well, and his, his comments fall right into this majority.
Finally, Alderman Favor, Tony?
So, I look up and I see, obviously, we've got some short-term and some long-term goals, which means that, you know, hopefully, we'll be able to make some progress very quickly on some of those. And, and then also, we'll roll up our sleeves and work on the longer-term goals as well. And I appreciate my fellow council members as well, input and discussion.
Thank you. Any comments from City Clerk Sue Herman or City Manager Ann Marie Gora? None? I'd call for a motion to adjourn tonight's committee of the whole.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? We are adjourned. Thank you.